...moderating our conversation this evening. I want to begin by giving a little background of how we got to this point. In July, candidates were sent a notification of this event by Amber Noonan, our SUYA president. The SUYA Legislative Committee then met at, uh, met to develop a questionnaire to send to all candidates. In August, once the list of candidates was finalized, each candidate was sent a follow-up invite to this event, as well as a questionnaire to be considered for a SUYA endorsement. It was made clear to each candidate that even if they chose not to attend tonight's event, they could still fill out the questionnaire. Three of the six candidates that are here with us tonight chose to fill out the questionnaire. Three have received the questionnaire, but thus far have not chosen to respond and sent their regrets via a group email for tonight's event due to a prior event, despite having over a month's notice for the date and time of the showcase. We are very excited to feature our three candidates here tonight. Chelsea Alhayer, Kelly Dillon, and Camille Peterson. We are eager to hear your thoughts on the future of Southwestern City Schools. Each of the questions tonight has been carefully developed by the SUYA Legislative Committee. We will be going in round robin style for each question to allow the candidates to respond. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. We will rotate each question with who goes first. Candidates, when you have 30 seconds left, you will see a yellow card. A red card indicates that you have run out of time, so please grab one and respond. Audience, we ask that you respect the candidates' time and please refrain from any comments while we are speaking. We know that you have a lot of classes to deal with, and we want to allow that time for each question. Additionally, we will all pause to allow for the most time possible for candidates to respond. Finally, please silence any non-attend members. This event is being streamed live on Facebook and we would like to allow for the best possible sound quality for those who cannot join us in person. We appreciate your cooperation in this time. All right, are you ready to begin? Okay, awesome. First question. Can you get the mic over there? All right. Question number one, what is your motivation for running the Board of Education? And what personal traits and experience do you have for this board? We'll start with Dr. Dillon when you're ready.
Thank you so much for inviting all of us. And I am honored to be here amongst all of our educators, whether here in person or online. I've been civically engaged my entire life, it's part of my ethos. The main reason I decided to run now rather than in the past was a confluence of current events. My first and foremost is frustration with the funding in this state. I've been frustrated since I moved to Ohio 20 something years ago, but especially how we fund our public education. And while a board may not have as much power as we would like in that funding formula, we do have opportunities to fight for that money. And one of those is against vouchers. I do believe that vouchers have a purpose and place, but a very narrow purpose and place. Not every learner learns best in the traditional format. So therefore, it should be need-based, whether that's academic, emotional learning, or socioeconomic. And any institution that gets public money should be held to the same standards as our public schools. It frustrated me that our district chose not to be included or continue to be included in the voucher lawsuit. I see it as an easy win, easy way to show how much we value public education. And too often, we need to put our money where our mouth is. I'm a natural communicator, natural operator. I enjoy partnering with people. So I decided to run because of a culmination of things. Number one is that I am a EL educator. I worked nine years in the district at the Lydon Middle School and Grand Park High School before going to this school district that my children attend. And my son has an IEP, I receive special ed services. So I saw something happening that made me feel like people that were the most important to me were being attacked. And that was not agreeable to me. And I said, first off, why are we calling any children with exceptionalities "learning challenged" and saying they need to be in other classrooms? And why are we saying that English language students are burdened on taxpayer dollars when their parents are also paying taxes? Those two things did not make sense to me. So I decided that on top of everything else going on, that I wanted to try to take this on because any student who walks on my classroom is isolated and any student in the district is grounded. And I love these details. And they're not only using it right now. As far as personality traits, I am very much in an app. I feel what they're saying, I feel what people need in their lives to support them. And I do my best to get things done to support them. I have passed out food during COVID to my students who did not get the check in the mail. I have worked in clubs, I've coached sports, I've done so many things in the district. And even though I currently work in a different school district, I want to do something that could still have a lasting impact on Southwestern City Schools.
Pivotal time of change. Pivotal time of board leadership needs to change. That's my motivation. My motivation driven me for the past almost two years being in the appointed seat currently serving with the board, that I need to keep this seat. And I need to keep this seat for you all sitting out there in that audience. I need to keep this seat for the students that we serve. I need to keep this seat for the community that we serve. So that's really, really part of our cooperation. The other reason to it is, I'm a licensed social worker, so that's a personal trait. I'm incorporating it all. I'm organized, but I believe in advocacy. And I believe in advocacy for all those areas that I just mentioned. We need to make a change in public education. We have to advocate for that change. We have to fight for that change. My motivation started 21 years ago just being a PTA parent and volunteer. And over that time, about 21 years, I learned this district. My motivation came because I learned the communities outside of just the western area. I learned the side of the individual areas outside of the borderlines of just Grove City. So it is a pivotal time for a board leadership change. The last big motivation is terminating that attorney's contract.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much for your thoughtful responses. All right, our next question is going to start with Ms. Alhayer, they'll pass it around that way. Southwestern City Schools District is the fifth largest district in Ohio and encompasses a dividing, oh wow, a diverse population and communities. What benefits and challenges does this present? And how would you ensure equity of resources across the district? That was a long question, someone need to repeat it or?
I think.
Think we got it?
I think I got it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. I think one of the biggest benefits that this offers is it allows children to see something outside of what is in their house, what is outside of what is in their neighborhood. Challenges, we have a lot. We are the fifth largest district, but we are the largest in the population of children's districts. So that's something that also needs to be considered. As far as equity and resources, I would say right now, when we have people who are calling our district the Grove City School District, we are not being comfortable. And I'm not saying that the board is telling that, but some people are. And it equally know that we are a school district of 119 square miles and we have so much more to show and represent and much more diversity to embrace than just what Grove City has to offer. I have so many families, EL, non-EL, that I go and I have been to their restaurants, to their grocery stores, to the places that they go. And I presented at the district that I work in the first week of school. And I asked how many staff members will have come to the community to see where our kids actually live and how they're represented? And maybe three people in each section.
Raise their hand. I think that not only do the children need to see themselves being represented by staff, by leaders in the school, but we need to show them that we see their diversity and that we embrace it.
I like to describe Southwestern to individuals as rural, urban, suburban. Okay, we cover it all, you're gonna get it all. And the positives of that is that we have a diverse student population, which gives exposure to our students and staff to work with students from all backgrounds, ethnicities, and cultures. That can be a great thing for our students when they graduate out of our school district. It's a great thing for our employees and our staff to encounter that. There is endless possibilities when you can work with diverse populations. Also, the positive score is, is we do give it to our money that qualifies our school district. And we are able to take advantage of that funding that we receive. That funding benefits all of our students in the district. Although some can only go, depending on what it is, to a specific field. The challenge, it does mean that there is an increase back in our time. So we have hiring, we have community work going on. It does mean that there is some areas that may be overlooked. And then there is an equity. And those are the things we need to address because we're so large. And those are the things that I would like to try to pinpoint down, or find those inequities, and tackle the ones that we can address right now instead of keep pushing them to the side.
Our students, our children, whether they enroll, enlist, or become employed, are going into a global economy. They are already globally connected through social media. They can learn to do whatever they would like through YouTube. No longer are we limited to who is on our block to meet. We get to know other cultures, other experiences. It doesn't even have to be necessarily a different culture, but different experiences. I mean, my mom makes spaghetti differently than my mother-in-law makes spaghetti. And something even that simple can help bridge gaps in opinions. It could help a feeling of belongingness. And when someone feels like they belong, they feel valued. And when you're valued, you learn. You learn better, you look forward to coming to school. Just think about the wonderful places you have gotten to work at, maybe that's where you are now. We appreciate that belongingness. And I think, I know our board needs to reflect our diversity. Our board needs to have a stake and value that diversity. In terms of ideas for equity, we need to listen to our stakeholders. We should not be having an adversarial relationship or conversation with the very people who are doing the hard work, you all here. We need to have conversations, what do you need in your building? My kids want a pinceman, we moved four miles away. And the differences between a Columbus address in Southwestern City Schools and a Grove City address in Southwestern City Schools was unacceptable. I don't have the answers of how to rectify that, but I do know we have enough smart people in our 119 square miles that we can figure it out together and we can do it openly.
Amazing. Thank you guys so much. Let's hear some of the people who are ready for this question. All right. What steps should the district take to recruit and retain a workforce that reflects the diverse students and community we serve?
Thank you. This was actually one of the areas that I was trying to work on when I first got appointed. And then all I would say is, as me and Matt Jordan were starting to make some progress, my seat got moved. I should say my, my area of focus got changed. And I got assigned to finance and facilities. But one of the things in this area I wanted to push for was, one, making sure we were at college universities, including those HCBU, uh, HBCUs. And also, I explained to them that we need to make sure that employees who are going to these college fairs, we need to take some that are of color. So that our, uh, the recruitment isn't walking past our table. They need to be able to see that, ooh, I can connect with someone from that district. I even volunteered to go to some of these, um, college fairs and to be taken a look. Now, don't get me wrong, I think, I'm not saying that we should just be hiring for the purposes, purpose of diversity. Qual, gotta be qualified, qualifications matter. But we should make sure we're not over looking. Our candidates, just because they are of a diverse or colored population, that I do recognize in the work. I'm not gonna lie, I question if that is happening. And the other thing is, is I think that when we're doing the search for it, we should be incorporating the building that we are doing the hiring for. So as a administrator, I really do think we should be allowed with, with staff to get a chance to participate and ask questions, how would they engage? And how would they interact and things like that? So we gotta do more focus of retaining and actually recruiting diverse population of staff in our hiring.
All of these parts move together. Funding means we have salaries to give. We should be a district of destination. When my husband and I decided to buy a home, it had to be Southwestern City Schools. We knew eventually we would have children and we knew this was a quality district. As an educator myself, I've been on search committees. And it's hard to find sometimes someone who wants to step in and right a ship. Or if there's too much turnover, it could really disrupt the learning. And that could be turnover in transportation, it can be turnover in contracts and vendors, and it could simply be teachers moving from one building to another. We need to be out in higher education, I agree with Camille. We need to go where the new teachers are. We need to go beyond just the state of Ohio and just the big, large ponds. There are people out there who are spending a lot of money to do what you do. And perhaps you all are the best judge of who we should be hiring. So the inclusion of stakeholders, not just in the building, but the community as well. And I go back to my previous response, we can't possibly recruit and retain exceptional talent if we're talking down to them as a board. If we are having an adversarial relationship, no one will stay where they're not valued. I value the work that you do. Our board should openly and privately value the work that you do. So if we're going to recruit people to come here and keep them here, we have to make sure that they're happy. And that goes beyond salary, that goes beyond getting you pencils or paper towels or hand sanitizer. Your voice should be heard, you are part of this. We call you stakeholders for a reason, and the board should take that into account. I don't know what points I chomped down. One of the things that both of the other members said that I had heard right away was, what schools are we going to when we look for educators? Because what I've seen in the past is a lot of Ohio State, only green, um, schools that do not reflect our student population. So we need to look at that when we're going out. Another one is that somebody had mentioned to me in a previous conversation that they don't feel like a member of our educators in the schools or anybody who works in the schools reflects the community of people with exceptionalities. So if somebody has an exceptionality, but they're qualified for the job, why are we not allowing them to be in the schools? And then the third one, which I always go back to, sorry guys, is something that I heard at a conference recently was, why are we not taking our students that are diverse, that qualify for the seal of bilinguality, that speak English and their home language fluently? Why are we not grabbing those students and training them to be our bilingual aids? And why are we not putting them on a track to be able to get an associate's degree to work in schools? Or why are we not putting them in touch with somebody that can help them become educators in the schools? Those students are more than qualified to communicate in multiple languages. And I can just say, as a teacher who's been in a school where I speak Spanish, but not perfectly, I've been called out of class to translate and to interpret for families. And that's not okay, teachers should not be doing that. But if we have a staff waiting for us who speaks Tagalog, who speaks Spanish, who speaks Hindi, who speaks Nepali, who speaks Tamil, who speaks Tamil, who's already coming to meet up, then the parents will want to sign to our school.
Thank you so much. All right, Dr. Dillon, so would you answer this question? What does our district do well to support students receiving multilingual learner services and students receiving special education services? How could those services be improved?
That's a great question, and I will admit that I'm not as educated on that as I could be, which I'm grateful for, like Chelsea and Camille that I'm running with, that can be helpful on that. However, I do think that simply adhering to the legal reasons, so here's an IEP, and this is what we have to do, and then somehow administration is dragging its feet in providing those resources, we have to do it in the spirit, not just the letter of it. And I believe we do that in our classrooms. I believe you do that. I also believe in universal design for learning. As a college professor, I try to practice this in my own classroom. And if I can supply information, engage learners of any type, if they're auditory, visual, maybe they use screen readers, their native tongue is not English, that benefits, if I can find a way to reach all of those people at the same time, it benefits everyone else. So if I can, if we can make sure that you have the resources to be able to do that. I believe that our size can help on this as well. I think it opens avenues to financial resources that maybe a smaller school district wouldn't be able to go for. That could help train and recruit individuals that know how to do this, rather than Frankensteining things together across buildings. I think as far as the multilingual learners, one thing that is not felt is that the district trains its staff. And when I say that, a lot of the training is the EL staff. So I think the training could extend to the general ed teachers to be admin to other people that are in the schools. I think it also needs to be included on the classroom. So the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers. There's something worse than a kid going out to a bus on the first day of school in a new country and having no idea what the bus driver's saying, and then the bus driver just stares at them. And this happens pretty frequently. So the training that we're doing for the educators needs to be implemented across the board. And then for the special ed program, I think that a lot of the buildings have really great things going on. And not to knock any admin, but I think a lot of it is the teachers figuring it out. I think that the schools that either rather have have great ISs, have had great programs in place, and they just kind of figure out what they need to do and what works best. But I would love to see more support from the admin. I'd also think that's something that more training needs to be done for general ed teachers as well. And if those two groups are not being served, then we're not serving any of the kids. Because things that we do, that we teach our multilingual learners, that we teach children in special ed classes, those are best practices for all of our students. And if we're not differentiated for one, we're not differentiating for any.
My counterparts did good, and they're not even in an appointed seat yet. You fell over in the right track. So I'm gonna tag off of them, but add how I'm in the seat right now. So what we do well is some of the things that they have already mentioned. I think we recently changed the terminology we're using for our department. Now they're starting to implement that from ESL to.
ELD.
ELD, English Language Development. Thinking of all our acronyms. Development. And what I think we also do well at is also incorporating those language strategies into the learning for our teachers, so that those are incorporated, be translating materials. I think providing with interpreter, interpreters, and keepers, and ensuring that those are in place for the benefit of our family and our staff. Probably know in the office, they have the CARP, where we give, we need an interpreter on hand. That's a start, where we are able to access that and try to obtain an interpreter a lot quicker than what we could before in the past. So a start is always good, even though it's not a CARP, I was like, I will take it on the CARP, okay? The improvement, Chelsea hit it right on the head. I was gonna say that we need to be training all of our staff, however, not just limited to our English language development. Department and those staff members. Again, the, the teacher, the secretary in the office is no more important than the teacher. The kitchen cooks is no more important than the custodian. The custodian is no more important than the administrator. It takes all of those positions to run an eight-hour day. So they all should be trained.
Thank you guys so much. All right, this next question was for Ms. Alhayer. How do you deal with controversial issues and/or people who disagree with you?
Say that one more time.
Absolutely, I'll say it again. How do you deal with controversial issues and/or people who disagree with you?
Well, I talk to students as always, right? No, I am very into conversations. So if somebody disagrees with me, I want to know why, I want to be able to look at their side of it. That doesn't mean that I'm going to change my viewpoint or anything, but I am willing to look at what they're bringing forward. And maybe it will mold my opinion in a different way. Maybe it will allow me to see that my viewpoint has a bias that I wasn't aware of. Or that, um, maybe they were right and I was wrong. And I have no problem admitting when I am wrong because similar to hypothesis in science class, it's able to change. If it's wrong, you gotta do it again. And that's, shout out to Leah Wolter in the back because she was my science shelter teacher with me at high school. But you have to be willing to look at the bigger picture. It's not just about you, it's not just about the person. What is the issue at hand? And as far as controversial subjects, I, I, it would have to be on a case-by-case basis. I think a lot of things that are considered controversial really just come around to they may start with the uncomparable. And maybe we all need to reflect on the wrong biases that apply to our students.
Constructive criticism is a great, is a great thing. It's not, it's not a, a, a negative. We don't enhance our mindset and our skills without constructive criticism. Constructive criticism is how you grow. I preach, I shouldn't say preach, I lecture that to my students. I preach, I shouldn't say preach, I lecture that to my staff. I tell my staff that all the time, that they have to look at feedback and criticism in a positive way. So open-mindedness is definitely the key to it. You can take what is being said to you, and that is how you use it for collaboration. As you have seen, my time on this almost two-year appointed seat, I'm always on the opposite side, I'm always saying something wrong, and I pretty much take the angle one way. We'll tell them whatever we do is, let's figure out what we have common in it, because obviously there is a difference on with it. So I try to use it as a way to enhance myself, be open-minded, but also collaboration. Controversial issues, I agree depending on the topic and subject, but again, that is one, that openness is important, because that is the only way we grow. And it's not something for just shy away. And then just a time to break in here, agree to disagree, but let's figure out where the commonality is, so that we can make progress and move forward, instead of just being haunted and not making any
I was speaking with a few of you earlier, and this question came up. And I honestly think we have common ground, we have common goals. I tell my students, I'm on team you, I'm rooting for you to succeed. Anyone who has a child, a home, spends time in our district, wants to see our district do well. We want to see our future as bright. We may have different means of getting there, but that's okay. If we have a common ground and our values align, that we want to treat people kindly, that we want to value our, you know, teachers and our staff. How we get there, we need to compromise. We need to be able to communicate. We need to be able to listen in order to hear, not listening to speak. Leaders need to check their ego. I have to do this plenty of times. If I get too tired, it's about me, 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 me. But we need to be able to say when we're wrong. We need to be open to that compromise. We need to try and do this judgment-free. We can have differences of opinion, we can have differences of values. I can respect that. But it also doesn't mean I'm going to be a doormat. And I think our children need to understand how they can stand up for themselves in a fact-based, they can back up what they're saying. I don't have a problem with controversial topics. My syllabi are anti-racist in nature, we go right at it. Because my students need to understand that they're not going to be around people that think about, that think like them all of the time. And they're not going to move next to someone that thinks just like them. And they're not going to work next to someone who thinks just like them. So we have to figure out, what are these different perspectives, and how can I learn from those perspectives?
Thank you very much. Okay, our next question will start with Ms. Peterson. How are you planning on connecting with voters to ensure that they come out to the polls in November?
We got to get them there. We need them, we need them, we're getting them bad. We need them bad. It's called door-to-door. We are, I'm gonna do the social work back in, we're going grassroots. Grassroots. We gotta go door-to-door, and we gotta knock them down, and we gotta pass out the literature that has the facts, that has our qualified experience and qualifications, and we gotta let them know. We gotta let them know the truth. And we gotta let them know that if they want their voice heard, so that they can make decisions, they gotta go vote to do it. Grassroots, door-to-door, I honestly feel is how we're gonna pull this out. Rustling area, like the Heights area, those little pockets that are usually low in attendance, we gotta go connect with them. We gotta have conversations with them. We gotta engage them, we gotta answer their questions. They're just sitting there in their homes, and they might be just going through the social media or going on the internet, but they need to hear it from our mouths. And so I really think that is how this is gonna work, is by going by grassroots efforts of hitting those pockets. I also think hitting those populations that people wouldn't suspect. Pull those numbers with the, with the areas that are the low turnout, that means going to, we hit them, go to the Samah, go to the Sanyam, go to the young voters that are just now able to vote and are registered. We need to get them registered. They have a voice. It was amazing to see our young voters when I was going to graduation party, saying, Camille, I'm registered to vote, and I signed your petition. And I was like, man, I remember when you were five. So those are the pockets, if we can hit those, plus the lower area of turnout, and not through the rest of them, we got
We need you. We need you to believe in us, and we need you to walk with us, so that we can walk with you in the future. We, the community cares. They may feel like their voice isn't heard, but the community sometimes has two jobs, and school pickup, and scouting, and youth group, and maybe third shift. And you have a marriage where you're just trading post-its. I've had a marriage like that before, you know? And, and your two shifts pass in the night. We need to reach out to those people and make it as easy as possible. You're registered, great. You care about this, great. You got three people you want to vote for for this? Chelsea, Dr. Doe, and Camille? Yes. All right, let's get you an absentee ballot. Let's get you up to 161 and have you vote early. You don't have to worry about it on a workday. You don't have to worry about traffic, you don't have to worry about rain. I'm going, I'm getting the mail ballots. Let's make it as easy as possible for individuals to get involved. I'm also going to bring that to the board as well. If stuff can't be talked about at a board meeting, we need to have and go to those communities when they are there. Not at 3:30 on a Wednesday afternoon in this particular parking lot. If we gotta do it at nine o'clock on a Saturday night, then nine o'clock on a Saturday, we're gonna do it, we just gotta turn on the lights. So we need to meet people where they are and give them the tools to show up, whether that's voting, getting involved in their schools, getting involved in their children's lives, or just even the community. We have to meet them where they are.
I would also argue that we're not planning on connecting with voters, we already been up there actively attempting to focus. So we've been going to sports practices, I went to some of the classes the other day, and I was like, hey, I see you guys, I know you're part of Grove City. And they're like, you mean you don't just see Grove City High School? Yeah. And they were, give us a ticket. So I did that, I went over to Redwood Heights, and I sat, I stood at the confession stand, and as students came up, I said, hey, are you 18? Are you going to be 18 by lunch today? Are you registered to vote? I sent one kid the link, he sent another kid the link, I had eight kids registered to vote by the time I left the soccer game. Youth voters are super important. We have so many voters in this district who don't realize that they can vote. They think they're ineligible because their parents are from another country. They've never heard of
Which is, we teach it in school. But they, they think that they, they can't vote, for whatever reason. So we need to be talking to the young people. I've also been talking with several of my former students to form a youth committee, to get students that are in the schools talking to their friends and other people that are in the schools. I have some plans in place already to go to a couple of the Ukrainian churches, La Plaza Tapatia, and I'm looking into some of the senior living communities. So I think the young people and then the senior citizens of the district really need to be hit and hit hard. Not literally.
Thank you guys so much. Our next question, Dr. Miller, very nice to start, okay, perfect. What are your ideas for making schools safer for students and staff?
Oof, especially with news today, hey? I think we need to utilize the resources we have. I think we have to make it a team effort. My dissertation is literally in bystander intervention. See something, say something. Sounds great, sounds easy, it's hella hard. We need to help and have different avenues, that when something just seems off, we all have that spidey sense, we had it when we were 14, we have it when we're 40-something, something just seems off, who can you go to? Who's a safe person that you can go to? How can we indirectly intervene? Another way we can make our schools safe is to make sure that our counselor-to-student ratio is not in the three digits. Not just career counseling, but sometimes you're the parent, or the grandparent, or the big sister, and you're making sure that they get fed, making sure that they're safe at home. We know about those invisible backpacks that they bring. I am not equipped, I may have a couple of degrees in psychology, but I am not equipped to help a student get talked down from a ledge. I want to hire many more people that are equipped to do that. I believe if we could treat symptoms and give our community members more opportunities and better ways to communicate when something is off, I think that's a great start.
When I heard this question about safety of students, I think that there's two different categories that we need to address. I think there's physical safety in the schools and mental safety of the students. I was lucky to work at some higher-needs schools in the district. And I would say, a lot of people would say that that doesn't make sense, but the higher-needs schools in the district had tons of resources for our students' mental health. I don't know how many times, I don't know how many of you know Rory Baylock, but how many times she would stand up and just have so many staff meetings about our children being safe. She would talk about hunger, she would talk about homelessness, she would talk about suicide prevention. And having the programs come into the school and meeting with the students is huge. I know we have communities in schools, we have directions for youth, we have programs for children. I don't know if all of the schools have those, if you guys can give me a, or a, but I'm sure that a lot of the schools don't have them. And as far as physical safety, I am one that was very uncomfortable with an increased presence of security and SROs at the current district that I work in. But what I realized is, the children vote for metal detectors every day, and doing that at first made them uncomfortable, but then they realized it was something for protection and safety. And they have metal detectors at every door, all of the doors they walked all of the time, which I know is not the case in all of our buildings in Southwestern City Schools. Sometimes they get prompted, and sometimes people just let anybody in without knowing who they are. And we have to protect our students' minds, our students' mental states, as well as all of the students that are in our building physically.
Okay, I'm gonna answer this in a two-fold. Current seat, and as what we're doing, and what I think we can do more. Was one of our top board priorities at our vision meeting in February was safety and security. What we're doing well, we started addressing security cameras in buildings, making sure we had the security cameras, but we also had some buildings who had security cameras that were broke. They didn't even work. And I was like, can we not just keep having not-working equipment sitting in the buildings? How about we fix them? So fixing the cameras that need to be fixed, too. We started doing like the front door, the double-locking entry for you to check in and things like that, that's a start. We continue to partner with the sheriff's department, the Grove City Police, so that they do those checks through the building, the safety checks, and make sure we're in good standards there. What we needed to improve on, this is the one I pushed towards the end of last school year and had forward for our vision meeting, was we need to do constant reminders to our staff, to ensure that they are continuing to follow the daily practices and protocols of our safety procedures. What she touched on, locking the doors, stop propping them, cross-check, things like that, rustling, making sure that side gate is closed at the time that it's supposed to, so our staff cars can stop getting stolen and taken off the back. So don't we get complacent and not do the practices and the procedures we do have in place? But what we need to improve on is making it a way that we can add those, community and schools, I know you can, all of those resources, try to spread those across the district. I am glad we got to keep the ones we did, because some districts lost it when the SRO funds was done.
Amazing. Thank you guys so much. Thank you candidates for sharing your thoughts on the future of Southwestern City Schools. We will now move on to a few questions submitted this evening to finish out our event. Candidates, please stick to the two-minute, a lot of time. Ms. Alhayer will start her interview, our first question. Our first question is, how would you improve special education preschool services and include them in elementary buildings throughout the district?
I'm going to be very honest, I have not looked much into the preschool system in the district. I did try to enroll my own child in it, but he did not qualify, so that was kind of where my knowledge on that ended. But it is something that I am more than willing to look into. I do think that, from what I've seen as a whole though, in the district, that I'm assuming that the preschool services for special ed students need more staffing. And I can just assume that because I've seen what goes on in other buildings. But I appreciate that question, and as soon as I get home, I'm gonna look up information about that.
Okay, preschool program. I love the ladies, we got that, it's like a star man. So what I'd like to do is, hopefully get more preschool plots on, increase the faculty in, so that it gets spread out across the district. What I both said here was, it's a fair time, we're talking about the pay budget and the money, this is real. We were very afraid, depending on that budget, how our preschool program currently was gonna remain in place. Me and you, me and you, I didn't know you, we, if we good, we good. And he did do that, oh, I'm like, oh, who's he staring? But we finally had noticed, we got our funding, we don't take it one school a year at a time, we got preschool this year. But I would tell you, they cut it to the wire. So that piece of how you keep it, we gotta keep going down, advocate to them politicians, because it's real. We were very afraid, how will we fund a preschool program if the funding was gone? It's a large budget that would have took from our school district funds. It was large. So advocacy is key, and I hope to expand it more, but with the, what we have, we gonna keep touching the ones that we can, and I agree, we need to be able to open it up for more students to be able, kids to get enrolled in preschool, because it is difficult for you to get them at kindergarten, and they've been sitting at home. You are playing catch-up, they already behind. And we gotta figure out how to get them young and sooner into the schools.
Both of my sons were peer models at the Harmon Peer Model preschool, and it was one of the most fun experiences we've had in the district. It also happened to be when I was in graduate school, and I would have to drive from Ohio State back down to get my son, get his son to sitter, go back up to Ohio State, and so forth, and gas wasn't where it should be. But I think we can take that model that we know works and expand it. And I think we can use some of the resources that we have and possibly borrow from other models. So for example, a Montessori model, where maybe there are older peers that are blended in with preschool. Maybe, you know, we should be having full-day kindergarten. We should have full-day preschool. I know that childcare is at a premium wherever you go. Preschool isn't necessarily childcare, and I understand that. But I think if we make it easier for any parent to enroll their child, I know the waitlist is so long. So we need to take our model that we know works and replicate it where we can. Also, I think we can start to, or try to leverage, some of the services a special ed child might be having. So maybe occupational therapy, speech therapy, art therapy. And can we have a location where those therapists can come to the child while they're in preschool, which would take some of that onus off of the preschool teacher? So I think we have the tools, we have a model. We need the resources to be able to expand that. I don't know what those cost. I'm sure it's more than we can afford. But we also need to advocate to make sure that resources aren't being lost.
Thank you so much. All right, our next question, we'll start with Pearson's question. Can you speak to how you will be able to increase support for healthcare-related services and staff? So nurses, PTs, PTs, and other therapies at our school?
I had to pause on this one. Because everything is a budget. Everything is a budget, but it is an important area. I am exploring right now with the nursing area category. Many may know that I served as the school board chair for the nurses committee. And currently, my whole state plan is wherever I can get it. Currently, we're doing, we contract with Ohio Health, so that we can at least have a medical professional that we can access with medical questions, that we run into situations. That is a start. My hope is that we are able to see what questions are arising and coming forward. And then from that, be able to figure out, okay, what is our, is it financially affordable for us to create a position? What does that cost look like? And at that point, if there's gonna be a specific title or area, now we're creating a job description. Why would we just bring in some position that we're not giving people director? So I'm starting with the nurses area and hopefully continue to grow from that. Any little small contrast that we can get, I'm gonna take them. It may not be what we want or what we're looking for, but if I can get them to agree to it, we'll start with it. But nurses right now is the area that I'm playing around with, with the school board.
I think if we could incorporate some peer training, especially at the older levels, to take the onus off of the counselors who are already overloaded. So I remember there were, there were peer collaborative, peer, gosh, I wish I could remember them. It's been like 30 something years. But peers that are trained to de-escalate, to work with conflict, to maybe just help someone else advocate for themselves, the services or needs that they have. That's a low-hanging fruit, right? We want to get people who want to do these things. So in the nursing program at my university, they partner with a hospital to do some of their clinicals. And it very well just could be ear and eye checking. Are we going to those programs? We have plenty of them in Columbus. Are we offering our district as a field placement option? Because that's, again, a low-hanging fruit. I do think that we could reach out to retirees of the healthcare system. Those that may, maybe they just want a little extra coin, or they want something to do. That might be an untapped population that we can go to. Of course, it's going to cost money, everything does, right? But if we can figure out how to offer either wraparound services or at least connecting families and students to the resources that are already available, have somebody who can help them advocate to, you know, let's fill out that free lunch form together. Let's find out who your Medicaid person is, and let's get them on the phone and help you get into X, Y, and Z. I know you're already doing that because you care about our students. We need to find individuals that can take that burden off of you so you can teach.
So call me crazy, but OTPT nurses should be in all of the buildings every day. I'm fully aware that they're being stretched in many different places at once. And something I know all of you sitting here understand is, imagine if you have a student whose attendance is at best and they receive services, but the OT is only there once a week, and it's on Mondays. And that kid never shows up on Mondays. That kid's needs are not being met. And it's not the OT's fault, we just have to figure out how to get people in. While Kelly and Camille were talking, I also had a couple other crazy ideas. The old Brook Park building, that's a lot of talk on the Grove City page. Why couldn't we turn that into a district health center? Just an idea that I just had, so don't ask me any of the logistics of it, but I was just thinking. Furthermore, we have students that are in nursing programs, that are in health-related field programs at the Career Academy. Why are we not bringing those kids in and showing them how to do the ear exams, the eye exams, so that doesn't fall onto, you know, the nursing and med monitors who sit and do three weeks in the cafeteria in the library, taking away from library space, taking away from the... We have students that are... And you don't really allow them the opportunity to implement their training. So thank you so much.
I took the nurses.
Okay, so doctor, all right, cool. I'm getting lost too, all right. Please describe your perspective on supporting diversity and creating a safe and inviting space for many different backgrounds or opinions.
That's what I do, that's what I do in my classrooms. But it's not just those historically marginalized voices, but it also might be someone who feels that their conservative voice isn't being heard. Or perhaps they adhere to a very different faith system, and that's not being represented in some way. How do you, how do you fix that? I don't know. But I think in our schools, having, looking at our curriculum, giving you the choice to choose from a diversity of texts, choosing diversity of media. These students, I mean, are Gen Z's, are Gen Alphas, they are a mediated generation. They are probably more diverse in their content consumption than most of us are, and we're trying to do it that way. I think we have to listen and not judge. We have to create that safe space. If you don't feel safe with me, you're not going to stretch yourself beyond your comfort zone. And I think authenticity is at the heart of that. You need to be who you are for your students. You can't hide a piece of you. You can't hide a piece of your identity, especially if those identities intersect in different ways.
I'm very empathetic with my students, and I feel that I give them the comfort to be authentic with me. You need to have that comfort. You need to know that you are supported whoever you are, regardless of your identity.
And I think once our...
I know personally, a lot of things that I do space have been getting laws put in place higher than just our district. So some of the things are going to be, uh, going to legislation and talking about things. But one thing that I thought of was, when I worked in the middle schools, that was, so I was, you know, 25, 26. That was the first time I ever heard of Mons Amusa. And he was the most rich, most respected man in the world at that time. And he was an African ruler. And thinking back when I was in school, and I went to Columbus City Schools, so I wasn't in, um, I don't know, little town, I was in a very diverse neighborhood.
I never learned any African history. Our world history was Europe and America. And those things need to be considered when we're considering our students. I could sit here and talk for days about what our EL and immigrant families need, but it even goes beyond that because we have students here that are born here, that have been raised here, that are not being, they're not able to see their cultures and religions and things like that be recognized. Every, every year, it's, oh, it's September 15th, happy Hispanic Heritage Month. But then you're planning state testing on Eid. How does that make sense? We have a huge Muslim population in this district. And if we're looking out for one group, we need to be honoring and celebrating the holidays and sacred events in all of our organizations and all of our groups. And it's difficult because we have a lot of kids from a lot of different places who practice a lot of different religions and beliefs. But if we're doing it for one, we need to do it for all.
I'm glad you asked this question because I can actually answer it and not get scolded. Because forbid I say DEI or anything of a broadness when it's harmful when I try to approach the topic to, to address a statement or issue, they immediately use it as an attack. And they're missing the statement I'm making, or they're misconstruing my statements. So I always have to be disclaimers when I want to ensure they understand the statement I'm making. Because they instantly move like, oh, sure, I try. That's why I said I don't know what to do. What I often tell them is, you cannot preach, I'm gonna say it, because I have a quick thought. You cannot preach DEI to individuals who used to be in minority in the world. I have staff that have been in minority in a college classroom. I have staff that have been in minority in a working, I have been in minority a part of work. No one has ever heard or seen that as an excuse, as a, as a fault or anything else. Because it's not, I have qualifications, I am experienced, and I know it. And it is important. It is not a bad thing, it is not a negative. We need to be encouraging diversity, equity, and inclusion. So how I take it back from them? You don't have to worry about me focusing on that card. I'll come back to it, but inclusive encompasses that D for diversity. So I focus on inclusiveness. We need to keep our district and our buildings inclusive and make a safe space for all.
Thank you so much. Ms. Alire, we'll start with you for our next question. What are your top three priorities if you are elected to the board?
Your spot is one that I'm gonna let, one of the other ways to take care of. But I think one of the biggest things that I've been kind of ruminating over lately is why does our district not take advantage of the free breakfast and lunch program for our students? Because I have, my, my children have friends. My son came up to me the other day, he's in first grade, and he said, Mom, my friend said that they don't really eat dinner when they go home. I said, well, like, they, they eat like, that's another question. But he said, he eats breakfast in lunch school, and then he comes back and he eats breakfast in lunch school. And I was thinking about a little bit of a moment, I have one of those backpacks that's no more to look it up. So that's, that's number one. And I have one, I was gonna, my other one's, I'm gonna try to touch base really quick. But obviously, you know, being an SPOC organization, and the law is suffering. Number one, children, especially, do not have a chance, do not call them. But we need to guarantee that those children are being protected, especially right now, the laws are being changed and funding. And then, as you say, I guess, protection for our good students. I don't know how many of you know this, but between August and November, five states are losing their legal protection, or five countries, I'm sorry, are losing their legal protection that was set in place. And those include Ukraine, Haiti, and three Spanish-speaking countries. I have no idea what that's gonna mean for my job. I have no idea what that's going to mean for my students. And I worry every day. I have a student who hasn't been to school since January because she's afraid to sit at the bus stop. They are children. They should not have to worry about these things. They should not have to worry about being hungry over the weekend. They should not have to worry about somebody coming and taking their family.
My three priorities, because I'm gonna want the last one, which is really fall into the last one. But the first one is, our students are, again, learning in a different climate at times. Our policies, our policies are old. I was telling someone that I was speaking with earlier, as some, as some that I'm like, that's a 1983, I ain't gonna lie, I was three years old.